Or extended noise which shall unreasonably disturb the quiet comfort or close of any person in the vicinity, such as allowing or permitting any dog to bark repeatedly in an area where such a barking can be heard by the nearby residential property. I don't have a demonstration of crouching, but I'm sure we can figure it out later when the bar closes down on Saturday night.
Should we call him at three o'clock?
Yep, call you at three o'clock. I think we should move on, please.
I got, I got an Article four one here if nobody's got anything else. Article four, four six, section four oh eight C.
Dimensional requirements.
And he's got down here dimensional requirements, maximum height of structures and stories two and thirty-five feet. If this is a requirement, then the next, which is uh.
Oh, I see what he's saying because like in the first one, it says two stories in feet is thirty-five and then the next one, four oh nine, it says in stories, two and a half stories is thirty-five feet.
Yep.
So, which isn't, they're, they're, and they're all saying two and a half stories.
Exactly.
Is thirty-five feet and two stories is thirty-five feet, so.
Four six.
Let's just make them the same.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I kinda was wondering if that's going off like your picture you wrote and you gotta call Paul Pitcher or something like that.
One is talking egg, the other one's talking residential, the next one's talking different like about residential.
Yep.
Then the manufactured housing community, which I don't think they have.
Right over there. Commercial.
Commercial says maximum height is in stories, three stories or in feet thirty-five feet. That's.
Yeah, let's pick a number.
Throw it in a hat, you know?
Yeah.
I, I wondered if maybe that should go back to maybe like what the county's building code is.
See, I can see why they have thirty-five feet or two. That's like Lake Residential, they don't want somebody to put a really tall house there where it interferes with the view of somebody else, maybe, I would imagine.
I don't think they're sticking to that because on our lake, they're took, they tore down a tiny little cottage and put up a monstrosity that's very tall.
More than thirty-five feet.
Yes.
Where were you dead? What are you recording it?
I didn't hear looking at that, Andy.
That's what I was looking to see if I could find where it says.
But they had to take it out?
Yep.
Are asked for permission for paper forgiveness?
Yeah, right, yep.
Do we wanna table this?
I would like to table this, the weekend.
Until we can.
Call Stanton and get some more information. You're fine, just gotta get rid of that.
Now, when we're into this, I don't know if you wanna just finish your list first, um, there's something I've noticed on, say, R one or R two, that's like downtown areas or uh, or a lake, it has uh, those are, some of those are small lots and they have fifty feet.
Where's the app?
For the front, okay, you have, I don't know the, every street what the uh, right away is, say it's thirty-three feet from the center of the road, sixty-six feet total. So you gotta go in thirty-three feet from the center of the road in, and that's technically where the property line is, then you have to go on additional fifty feet. And uh, then you only have ten feet for the backyard, that'll limit you, you can, you have a small window and what if somebody wants to have more of a backyard? Me myself, I'd rather have, if I was on the lake, I'd want a bigger backyard because you have more privacy than to have it in the front, I don't know if you.
Yeah, and I was even noticing that some of these drawings, you know, luckily some of these people have enough room, but you get a lot.
Yeah, I know.
And you ain't got much there.
No, you don't. That's what, uh, say for instance, if it's a hundred and twenty foot uh, property from the road right away to the back of the property, you have a twenty-four foot house, uh, deep house, your front yard's gonna have to be seventy-two feet and your backyard's only twenty-four feet. You know, I would rather even make it more balanced or something.
I think that's where you go, section four fourteen.
I can see.
Off from the center of the road right away.
Sixty feet, yeah, but we go, but we don't go by center of the road, we'd have to make a lot of changes, it'd be better to change that number for your one and R two. Now, because of ag, that's fine, you know, people have, you know, bigger lots in ag, so that wouldn't be an issue unless they wanna change it too. If you're in ag, I'd like to.
And it does, it gives the.
Normally, but you'd have to call the road commission and uh.
It gives the. There are different histories on Article four oh seven A.
Yeah, it sounds like we need to go back to this.
I think most of that that he's got in here is uh, four, Article four twenty.
Four twenty?
Yeah, Article four, four twenty, section A. Uh, here's, uh, here's one here real quick before we go down, our four sixteen, under uh, manufactured housing review and standards, it would be two C, and that's where they have at the end of that, it's twenty-five, and they got parentheses to twenty-five thousand. So, I think there should be twenty-five thousand added before they put it in parentheses, not just twenty-five. So that was a typo that I had seen.
Okay. So, don't forget the very bottom. Okay, got it.
All right, uh, it was Article four, four twenty. Section A, it would, it would be.
What section? Four?
It would be on uh, page or Article, Article four twenty of the page, and then it would be under D is two and three.
Which section, what section is parking?
Uh, streets, driveway and parking spaces.
Got it.
Three.
Four sixteen. Okay, this is all under manufactured housing review standards.
He's saying something about determined lumens should be added to that. Am I on the right one? Hey, oh, I'm too far back. Hey. Section A, C.
What page is it?
Four nineteen, all internal streets.
Yeah.
Streets, driveways, parking spaces.
Shall be lighted as follows.
Oh.
Is that what he's saying?
Yeah, but it would be the, you gotta found the, the two eyes.
Okay?
Okay, okay, now I know where we're at. Section four sixteen, it looks like, and all is the internal road intersections.
Oh, I see, he's saying from, from foot candles.
Right, and lumens, yeah.
But it still goes by four candles.
Obviously. I don't think they're really gonna manufacture a car.
Four oh two, that's now, section A, five F.
A. Section what now? Sixty days.
We got it down as, uh, it looks like four twenty-two on page four twenty-two.
F, the plan shall be approved.
Add bonds, insurance, accelerant, burying the entire project, same as wind at all.
Right here.
It's gonna be development review, it'll be the very last one.
Yeah, I got it. What is he talking about, that essay on all the stuff in it?
That's what I'm trying to.
That will be covered under the site plan review.
Article four, section A. Five F.
Yeah, that's just saying how it'll be approved.
I don't have a question on that one.
Yeah, all right.
And that's all he had, and that's all I had. And when somebody's got something else.
Right back on four.
Okay.
Article four two. Article four four, section four oh seven A, one.
Okay.
Agricultural district?
AR, educa- agricultural district is the intended purpose of the A one district. I think that should be AR.
Oh, yeah, I see that.
Oh, and that's. Okay, okay.
It's in there a couple times.
Yep, yep.
Got it.
All right.
Right.
And. Four oh eight B.
You have number twenty, wind.
Wind, you have what, B in there?
Yes. Four oh eight, what?
B. Special land agriculture.
It just needs to list the, oh, when we establish the wind energy conversion systems. So number twenty is that?
Yeah, what?
It should be held off till everything's finalized, so, you know, I haven't changed it now until we have an ordinance or when.
Well, it's gonna be there sooner or later. Still gotta be in the books. I have, I have in my notes, add if adopted, because we're not even close to being done with this book, so.
Another typo, I guess it would be section four eleven, it says special land uses, probably to take out page intentionally, they left blank. If I take them to a trial.
Oh.
I didn't see any reason for it to be there.
No, I do not either.
For section four eleven, number B, so special land uses and then it says cage, button, something like.
Well, now they're talking on that page intent, or uh, page intentionally left blank, I don't think they meant the page, but if you look into stories, feet, front, side yard, rear yard, all those are left blank, is that what?
I think what they did was they copied this that.
They wanted to add another sheet probably, and they something else was added.
Just, I, I read it, I read it, I didn't see the use for it to be there, so. That's the only thing I could think is when they copied.
Mine are from.
Because I see other places where the sheet blank, it says that, like.
Well, mine is the same one. Four fourteen.
A one, Michigan Department of Natural Resources and Environment, I don't know if that exists or not. That's a search.
Four or something, isn't it?
Eagle.
Eagle, what is that?
I'll look it up because it's. So what needs to be changed? The Michigan Department of Natural Resources.
That's what I, four sixteen.
A one. I don't think, I think it's renamed, the Michigan Department of Natural Resources and Environment, I, I think it was something EQ or eagle or something, yeah, eagle, I think.
Yeah, it's environmental, agricultural, something, something, something.
Okay.
And so I'll look it up and make sure we have it correct. And actually, the Monmouth County Health Department is now Health and Human Services, so that's the E J S, so that needs to be changed too. Does anybody have anything else?
Oh, I, I don't know if I can find this first. On five oh three.
Section five oh three?
Five oh three, letter E. The note says upon scheduling the site plan, the clerk shall provide public notice under section two oh six, A one and A two. If you go back to two oh six, it does not exist.
That's under public notice, section two oh six.
And I don't know where the A one and A two under two oh six are.
Oh, there is no A one, it should be B.
Should it be A and B, so not one and two or what? You got the radio right there?
Well, like how does.
Yeah, public shall be sorry.
What, they put on what's A? Two oh six, it should be B.
Yeah, it should be B.
Yeah, B.
B, one and two, that's the typo, so it doesn't change.
And then on F.
Okay.
Just a question, I mean, it says it would be, the applicant grants permission to zoning administrator and members of the planning commission the right to enter and access the property under petition to review the condition. Does that need to be scheduled or just don't wanna walk onto somebody's property without some?
What, what is that one?
F, five oh three, F. I don't know, do we have authority to do that or what?
Do you at least have to notify if they're coming even if they're not here?
What's that?
On this, four oh six, no, five oh three.
Five oh?
Five oh three.
Yeah.
I don't, legally I can go with the property. I don't, but I don't, like, I mean, if somebody, I'll knock on their door and all that, legally I can own the property, but I have to stay, stay on, I have to stay on a designated walkway or driveway, I can't step one foot on the grass unless it's.
Everybody's all over the place.
What's that?
What about me?
I don't, that's, I'm not on a planning.
Under petition, like, do we have that authority?
We might go observe this messed up road here.
Yes, because it's under petition. Like, enter access property under petition, unless that means there, there's a tissue, a building permit, if that means.
I think they're saying that so that if you do wanna go over there and look at the situation or whatever, as well, you know, a lot of times the board member would like to do that, they, they, I say in that there, they keep on there legally without giving any trouble.
Yeah, I would say, it says right there, the applicant is granting permission to the zoning commissioner and or members of the planning commission the right to enter and access the property that they're wanting.
They don't wanna walk onto somebody's property and have.
Shoot ya, they'll shoot ya.
Yeah, then I won't back, well.
Right.
Whether I was right or wrong.
In that same section, I wanna look at C, because it says no less than, if it's deemed no less, the applicant must be, application must be submitted and deemed complete no less than twenty days before the next available planning commission meeting to be considered replacement on the agenda.
Same section.
Same section, number C. I don't even have a section. Um, so, because, you know, so Dave gets it, and he looks through everything to make sure it's completed, and he sees that for the final site plan. So, I don't know, I think that we need to, we need to have clarification in there that, yes, Dave's got it and everything's there, but we haven't, as a commission, if we have to review that, we're not getting the information till two days prior to the meeting. So, we haven't had sufficient time to even look at it, you know, I said, well, if I don't have time, because I'm working. There should be something in here that states that, you know, if it's being forwarded on, forwarded on to this commission, that the commission members need to have it at least fifteen days prior to the meeting. Or whatever, you know, however, because, because I feel that we're doing a disservice to these people, so if they hand something in and Dave has it for a week because he has to review it, and then, you know, depending on when they've turned it in, and if we don't have sufficient time to look at it because the rest of us all have jobs. Well, I just, I think we need to have something in there that states, okay, yeah, he has it, but we need to make sure that we have it prior to the meeting so that we can review everything. Because, you know, I said, I got this up Tuesday night, I think I saw it in my email, but I haven't had a chance to, you know, I, I gave it a good cursory.
Yeah, same here, but I didn't sit down and like really look at it, yeah.
So, I mean, it appeared, so I just, I wanted to address that somewhere in here of making sure that it gets to all the commission members in a tiny fashion.
They just have the money they got before.
Yeah, and that's, that's what I'm saying is, that's when you got those, so.
So, should it say the application must be submitted to the planning commission twenty days before the next available meeting?
Well, we still gotta give public notice that we're even gonna review.
That's true, so maybe it should.
Notify anybody.
And that's why we got them on the agenda is to actually give public review on them, so we can set a public review on their applications.
So when we do that, so, like, for the ones for, so then we will set it up for our next meeting as a public hearing or, or set up a separate meeting for a public hearing.
Right.
Specifically just for that application, so that that's all we're doing.
Yes.
Instead of having them, which I think would be better, I know that nobody wants to attend more meetings, but personally, I think for the applicants, I think we should hold a special meeting specifically for their application, so they're not having to sit through all of this administrative stuff that they may not, may or may not care about. Um, so that we can make sure we move forward with any applications or permits that we need to do and give it enough notice.
Do you want to also make these changes and then email a copy?
Yes, I, that's.
So that I can bring it on through to the board for the changes that we wanna make on these first sections. You know, I've got it all wrote down, and you do a lot better than that.
Well, I was gonna make it, make all the changes and bring them back to our next meeting so that we can review them, so we can all look at them and say, okay, yes, that's what we want.
That's what we want.
Yeah, and then before we take it to the board. That's what I feel is, you know, the board may not see this, these changes that we're looking at, they may not see it till the September meeting, depending on how long it takes us to get through it, so that we can get through it, and then we can take it to them as a whole and say, here you go. But in the meantime, to conduct our other business as far as like that zoning application and the permits.
Well, and it gives us time too, if we got extra time, we can actually go look at what they wanna do.
Exactly.
And that's one of the things I wanna do, is I wanna be able to go to the residents and see if it's, uh, you know, a good thing that's gonna happen. If we're just putting a fence up the wrong way, I mean, that's fine and dandy, but.
We're asking for a variance.
Knowing that we're not gonna get any harm from contamination in the soil, vehicles are working there. So we're, also, and what we wanted to discuss on one through sixteen of the ordinance articles.
Yes, and we can, you know, if somebody comes up with something else at the meantime, at the next meeting, then we'll review it. I will do the changes that we have done tonight, and I'll email it to everybody, but then everybody can print up their copy, bring it back to the July meeting and we can review those changes, and then, and then at that time, then we'll move forward, I feel.
There's uh, one more thing, it's not in any section, but it's from the book, I mentioned it before about uh, if you build a car for under seven hundred and ninety-five dollars, you don't need it, uh, permit, and I think that should be scratched out of that.
In which section is that in base?
This is actually the county, ain't it?
Somebody copied it from the county, which we shouldn't do that.
Maybe the county.
Number one percent almost thinks that David blind, yeah, that's what he's talking about.
That's uh, accessory buildings, two hundred square feet or less, you don't need a permit, well, somebody, Mick puts one up two hundred and twenty-five feet, they're gonna, you know, who's, who's, without somebody going out there measuring that, you know, uh.
How do you know it's one of the?
Yeah, uh, and uh, accessory buildings for animals, non-farm, that's fine, accessory building for animals on farm, no. Okay, so anything in that, or just for the building for animals?
I think that's what it is, they, they, they don't need a zoning.
I, it doesn't say that uh.
Don't you need a building permit?
I don't, I never saw that.
There is an agricultural exemption application that has to be filled out, that has to go to the county, because I have it right here, it's Monmouth Building Department. And, but you still have to put your parcel number, what type of farming you're doing, what, how many acres of parcel you have, what's the proposed use of the building, what's the length with height, and then um.
I see, we should have it where, even if it's ag, I think you should still have to get a permit for that, um, I don't know.
I was gonna get a permit with no permit fees at one time.
What's that?
I heard that one time you had a permit, but there's no permit fees right at all.
Okay, now, I got into it back about a year ago, somebody, they didn't tell me it was farm, and I don't know every property, and the guy was trying to get me by the fort, I don't remember that, but uh, I never knew it was for farm, so I charged him like seven dollars or ten dollars or whatever. Now, the guy had an agenda, is what he had, but it doesn't matter, we should have it written in there. Another thing, the deck, thirty inches high or less, uh, does not need a permit, the county has that, like, or we, I don't feel we should copy off the county, we have our own township here, we need to, you know, what difference does it make if it's thirty inches or less?
Well, that part, we're gonna get more into that, go on, we get into these other articles, yeah, I think Article seven is gonna be a long article on it all.
And that's what I'm saying, well.
Well, there's one more thing, and then I'll keep quiet, on um, okay, I was told when I first started here, you can put an accessory building in without a dwelling on the property, um, I'm not. without a dwelling on the property, um, I'm not judging it by other township, but none of the townships I deal with have that, you have to have a dwelling on the park, property, and it's up to you guys, I think we need to clarify that somewhere in the book and say, you know, you can have a standalone accessory, if that's what you guys want, we should put it in the book somewhere.
We actually did that on my property, we had the, uh, homework up before the house was put.
Yeah, now see, I think we should clarify it in the book so that it, because the way I interpret it is, I've gone that way because I'm told that from the beginning, that's the way it was, so, um, but the way I see it, it doesn't say that in the book. And uh, oh, I got two things on the zoning application, whenever there's a violation, if I take it to court, or I can't write the violation out and turn it into the court unless I have either their uh, tax ID, uh, or the driver's license number or uh, birth date, uh, the courts won't accept anything, um, because if they put a warrant out for somebody's arrest, they have to know they're sending it to the right person that's got that name, so they will not accept a citation ticket, they turn me around and say, no, it's not complete. So it would make it easier down the road for us if they had that on the application, one of the two, that way it's, and that's pretty common with other townships.
Well, and then you could have these records, you could do easily with what animal's safe statement, and then after the application, you, you gotta show.
Oh, and that's another thing, they should, that or uh, tax ID number, um, that way it's more complete, and uh, I can look it up, but right now, my internet's down with the county, but I'm gonna get them back on there. Um, where with the tax ID number, you can look up a lot of different things, property and all that.
Did you have an area on that that you were?
Reproting?
Yes.
Some place in there, yeah, it's like, oh, it's.
She was on two oh five, B one.
Was it, okay.
Yep.
Two oh five.
B one. So you want. Well, in my book, it was B one, so. So Dave, on the, on the zoning permit application, you want an area for them to put either the driver's license or a date of birth?
Or both.
Or both, and or you want a tax ID or a property number?
And the tax ID number, yes.
Yes, okay.
Which would be good, sometimes they may not have an address, um, you know, they don't have residence there, but they're gonna do something, and all they'd be able to say is it's on McBride Road, in between this road and that road, and that's not detailed enough, I think they should have a tax ID number, that way I can.
So you want the permit, the permit actually changed of?
Yes, yeah.